Signing on, I know that we're getting started a little bit late. That's because of the usual technical programs that almost all of us have run into in the last 18 months or so. As we get used to video conferencing, using Zoom and trying to stay in touch with each other in this way. So we're starting a little late, we will end a little late. So I'm thinking probably roughly between five and 10 after one, we will wrap this up. We're not going to go through too much at the beginning of this. We will just without much ado, get right to our candidates. And we won't have opening statements, but we will give them a chance to have closing statements though. So you'll, you'll get a chance to have a true feel for the candidates. We have three city council positions on the ballot in Bellevue, so six candidates with us this afternoon. And we will, you know, we'll just go right to some of the questions. You know, we'll start with questions for position number one. That's Jared Nguyen House and Ruth Lipscomb. And our first question and many of our questions are going to deal with growth issues in Bellevue. So here's the first question, all the candidates will get to answer. The, the candidates for position number four will go first. With millions of square feet under construction downtown Bellevue is undergoing an explosion of growth. It's led by Amazon, a lot of other major companies. Candidates, what do you see as the impacts of that growth? And what steps should the city take to manage them? And Mr. Nguyen House, you get to answer first.
Well, thank you Essex and thank you to the BBA for putting this on today. Yes, growth and part of that growth is just kind of our economic recovery, which is going exceedingly well right now. With a unemployment rate at about 4.4%. Hotel occupancy not doing quite as well, but starting to rebound. But that has hurt due to the Delta variant. Commercial real estate vacancy is under 10%. And as you alluded to, there's nine million square feet of office space in development with about 90% of that space already pre-release. So, or pre-leased. So we are doing well, we are seeing a kind of a V-shaped recovery right now. But the reason we're doing as well, because this city pivoted and really went into action to help our small businesses and our residents. Everything from over what $800 million in PPP loans shifting to alfresco dining throughout the city. Allowing for restaurants to have more outdoor capacity, 200 businesses help with technical assistance. And we're still seeing very strong interest from Amazon, Facebook, et cetera, that want to be here in Bellevue. So Bellevue is looking very good in terms of an overall recovery.
And let me, I'm going to add just a little bit to your time because I, and I'll, I'll let the other candidates have a little extra time too. I want to be sure that you tell us now what steps the city should take to manage this growth throughout.
Well, I think it's a multi-pronged approach. I mean, the, the growth that we're seeing in Bellevue was planned for. We're just seeing it being accelerated excessively due to, you know, companies like Amazon. I mean, a company like Amazon only comes around once, maybe every couple of hundred years. It's amazing the amount of growth and how many jobs they're bringing in, in, into Bellevue. So I think we need to address obviously transportation issues. We're working very closely, not just with Amazon, but other companies as well to reduce the number of single occupancy drivers coming into the city. So it's looking at those, at the congestion issues and our multimodal approach to our transportation issues. It's ensuring that we protect our neighborhoods as well. And we make sure that we keep putting the growth in the growth corridor sectors that we initiated. So that's downtown dot red and.
Let me, let me stop you here. We'll be talking more about growth as, as we continue. But Ms. Lipscomb, a question for you. What do you see as the impacts of this growth? What steps should the city be taking to manage the growth?
Thank you. Yes, the growth is, is just explosive in the downtown core. And I think we have both short-term and long-term issues that we need to address. The short-term is just, it's hard to get through downtown due to all the construction. And, and that's, you know, there's not a whole lot you can do about that other than try and manage, you know, the detours and the lane closures and things like that. Eventually that, those buildings will all be built up. Then I think we need to start planning ahead for what happens when all the people are in those buildings. And I think there's two different things that we need to plan for. One is that a number of those buildings are office buildings. And so those people will need to be coming into the downtown core to work. And we need to have places for them to live in the city so that we are not overburdening 405. Getting, you know, down to Pierce County and up to Snohomish County for if people can't find a place they can afford to live in the city. So we need to work on our housing. So that is definitely going to need to be, to be dealt with. The other is that some of those buildings downtown are residential. And I think that we need to make sure that downtown is considered one of the neighborhoods. And that we make sure that the downtown core has the services that we have more readily in the more residential neighborhoods. Such as childcare and, you know, small mom and pop shops. And I think that, that some of the problem with the downtown core is that the rent there is going to be very expensive for those smaller businesses. So I think the city needs to start planning ahead for, for how to both keep the downtown as a livable neighborhood. And, and work on housing so that we will get, you know, lessen the transportation impacts.
This question going next to the, to the folks in position two and beginning with you Dexter Borby again. What do you see as the impacts of all this growth and what steps should the city take to manage?
Yes, thank you, thank you Essex. You know, Bellevue is achieving its vision as an economic and cultural center in the region. And, and as a small business owner, I'm very glad for that. I see though, that as we bring on approximately maybe 50, 60,000 more employees coming into Bellevue. There will be needs in housing, there will be, we need to work on transportation and we need to work on access to services. Right? In terms of housing, some proportion of those new employees will, will, will live in Bellevue. And we need to make sure that there's availability of housing for them. On top of that, those people will need, there will be an increase in need for various businesses and services. And those, those businesses will need to have employees themselves. And we need to make sure that there's also housing for people across the entire range of professions that make up a complete city. In terms of transportation, we do need to work on being able to get more people from point A to point B in an efficient manner. That involves working not only within the city, but also with other cities in the region and with the county. Because capacity outside of Bellevue will help with capacity inside of Bellevue. We also need to work on multimodal solutions, more efficient ways of moving people from A to B. We need to take a look, a look at the COVID landscape and look at what transportation demand is now looking like and manage accordingly to that.
Right? Let me interrupt you, let me interrupt you here. We will have a chance to talk more about transportation as well. But let me give Conrad Lee a chance to answer this question again. What steps should the city take to manage all the growth that's coming, Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee, don't forget to unmute, just unmute.
Essex, you and I are the old timers around here, right? So we have to take a little time to get used to technology. So it's nice to see you, however.
Yes.
You know, up and running. Anyway, yes, growth brings challenges. And Bellevue is a great city, we plan for growth. And so, you know, we are very happy, we have a great city, great council, great people. And however, with pandemic, you know, it's made a big unexpected impact. And of course with Amazon coming to value, you know, they're going to bring 25,000, 35,000 people coming. And it will be attracting other businesses coming as well. So these have accelerated the speed of growth. So we have to, you know, take steps to manage them. And the challenge, you know, we talk about some of them. But the first one I talk about is people, diversity. With all the business coming, with the growth we're seeing, we're seeing people from all over the world coming here. And we need to make sure that we welcome them. We adapt, adjust, welcome into our community and use their assets and ability to help us. And make sure that we grow in the right way, share the same values. Second, we talked about that, you know, transportation is a very important piece of quality of life. If people cannot move, cannot go to work, cannot go to school, cannot go to do the things they do, it's not going to work. So that's.
And Mr. Lee, we will, we'll talk more about transportation. We'll, we'll, we'll leave this for here and move on to the candidates for position six on this very same question. The first candidate getting to answer the question is Ms. Robinson. And again, what steps should the city be taking to manage all the growth that's coming?
I'm really proud to have been part of the solution for retaining our existing businesses like T-Mobile and attracting new businesses, businesses like Amazon. But there's a lot of challenges that come with this growth, specifically the traffic, small business retention and livability. So we're going to have to, you know, increase that housing office balance in downtown. We're going to have to increase more affordable housing, giving people the opportunity to live near where they work. We're going to have to increase our multimodal transportation options, give a lot of small business support, especially the outdoor dining establishments that have done so well during the summer, how can we keep that going during the winter? And also amenities, every time something is built new in downtown, I think it needs to give back to the community.
And for Dr. Johnson, your thoughts as well on this question? How should the city manage all this growth?
Yeah, yes, it's very poignant to me. I live in Old Bellevue, I'm a walk commuter, I have a small business. I see the growth, it's very exciting. I think the big issues that we're facing are transportation, housing, public safety. And I think those should all be addressed readily with the city. Transportation, we need to make sure that we keep all forms of transportation and also parking available to our city. We need to keep that in our comprehensive plan. Right now, we put about 20% of our budget, our transportation budget towards bike lanes and bicycling, which I love bicycling. But that's a very small percentage of our commuters. And we have a lot of people that commute in and commute out of Bellevue. We need to serve them all and serve them based on data and proportion of use. And housing, the problem with housing in Bellevue is we just are underbuilding and we have a short supply. So we need to streamline regulation, we need to improve our building supply, especially of the low to middle income housing. We can improve density, we can improve zoning, we can decrease the lot size, we can put in middle housing, things like that. And also I'm a real fan of live-work housing, where people actually can live where they work. And so we could have artists' lofts, working communities and multifamily buildings. We could have providers, like healthcare providers underneath their townhome, things like that. So that would be really exciting. And public safety, whenever you have growth, there's always a need for increased public safety and services. And so we need to get fire station 10 completed. We need to make sure we fund police and fire. And we need to make sure we keep our city livable and safe for not only residents, but for our small businesses and large businesses alike. Thank you.
Yes, our, our next question that almost continues on that theme, Mr. Lee will get the question first. And Mr. Lee, what role should city government take in ensuring that Bellevue is a city for all, including people from all income ranges? In the service and hospitality and retail sectors that's needed to support all the growth that's going on in downtown Bellevue? Mr. Lee?
Yes, as I mentioned, people are important, we need to engage them, we need to educate them, we need to communicate, set up programs where we address their needs and talk to the people who can really be connected, build connected trusted messengers. And it's very important. And so we said earlier, you know, people are affected by various modes of, number one, transportation. We have to figure out how to have multimodal systems. And number two, we have to make sure housing are available. We have to have different kinds of housing, different varieties, more options. And making sure that we understand. And number three, we have to create jobs, obviously. Without jobs, people are not going to be able to do the things that they want. And so it's important we provide opportunity to have jobs and encourage friendly environment to businesses. And importantly, we need to make sure the place is safe. Everybody come here because it's a safe place. So we have to make sure we do not defund our police, we actually support them. In a sense, Bellevue actually has increased the number of police officers last year. And we've increased also some civilian employment. And we are paying attention to firefighters, making sure that they have adequate facilities and ways to, you know, to keep our people safe from fire incidents and the high rises we have in our city and make sure that, yeah.
Mr. Lee, let me interrupt you, we, we will talk a little bit about police and public safety as well. I'm going to give you just a little extra time though, because could you be more specific about what city government should do to make sure that there is housing in all ranges, especially more affordable housing? Are there regulations that city government should impose?
Yes, absolutely, regulations, number one, we have technology to help with this, I just way to do it. But we, the city of Bellevue has been working on housing for the last 30 years. We developed a regional council on housing and that's a regional effort. We make sure that our women who are going through difficult life challenges and we have families, young people. We all have started working and it's been very successful. Of course, it's not exacerbated because of pandemics and other social concerns and new people coming to the city. So we are working very, very deliberately, very thoughtfully, how to help these few people. And Bellevue is the first city now we have a permanent homeless shelter developed for Bellevue. And also we have a transitional housing, then we have a market rate housing. It's all very, very well thought out and working with the community. His community ultimately is the one that have to support it, understand it and be able to help making this work. So we're doing this, we're doing more than many, many cities in the region has done.
Okay, okay, let, let me, let me give Mr. Borby an opportunity here to address this question again, making Bellevue a city for all.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. So I think from a city perspective, there's many things we can do. First of all is we need to look at our zoning and look at basically how this affects housing availability in our area. Some of our zoning is among the lightest in the region. And I think we can do a little bit better to create more housing opportunities in the limited square footage or square mileage that we have. Number two is we can, we can reevaluate our accessory dwelling unit ordinances. Bellevue's ordinances and accessory dwelling units are among the most restrictive in the region. And for those people who might be a little bit afraid of it, Mercer Island actually has very relaxed ADU ordinances. And we can simply normalize ourselves to the rest of the cities in our area. Number three, I do support transit oriented development because transit oriented development helps provide more housing in key transit corridors without increasing the amount of required congestion that comes with increasing density. Number four, we need to follow through on our affordable housing strategy. We have an affordable housing strategy from 2017 with various action items in various stages of implementation. And not, you know, and I think we can do more and follow through on that. And then we can also take a look at how we're, you know, we, we did some fantastic work during the pandemic in terms of rental assistance and other programs. And we can look at that as well. And then number five, probably number seven by now, just looking also at how we are able to help people who are immigrants and refugees, who people who are new to the place, be able to get the, know what resources they need to access in order to participate in either the rental market or the housing market.
Okay. Dr. Johnson, I think you get the next shot at this question. And again, making Bellevue a city for all, because with all the growth, it's going to still take a lot of working class people to support all the rest of the growth.
Yes, so there's a trend towards middle housing, which is bringing in affordable housing to serve more people in a better way. It does increase density in a city, but it can do it in a very, let's say, neighborhood characteristic manner. So that you could have walkable areas of your city, where you could have beautiful townhomes and small multifamily buildings, preserving height restriction, preserving neighborhood character. And you can still also have single-family neighborhoods with single-family homes that might be smaller on smaller light lot sizes. For example, right now we have a 7,000 square foot minimum lot size. If we reduce that, we might be able to put two or three houses where there might be one and still preserve neighborhood character. Also from the no to low income range, I'm a really positive advocate for employer-based supportive housing. We have a perfect example in Bellevue, it's called Providence Heights. It's, it happens to be faith-based, but it's employment-based. So women that are in transition, that may have had some experiences in the past that have left them at a disadvantage. Can now live at very low rent, it's about $500 a month. And they also get workforce training and they progress to jobs, they're there for about a year. And then they transition into other housing within the community with job skills. And many of them actually starting their own small businesses. And so I think small business support would be a big part of that picture as well.
Mayor Robinson, how would you approach this, making sure that Bellevue is a city for all?
You know, there's, we found that affordable housing does not happen on its own. It takes government intervention. And I really appreciate my opponent's support of supportive housing, because we need more of that. And supportive housing comes with services, as she described. And so, you know, creating those opportunities to put in the full spectrum of housing so everybody can afford to live where they work. Small business support, we have a special program that is specializes with minority and immigrant owned businesses. Trying to give them the resources that they need to make it through this amazing period of growth and certainly through COVID as well. And then creating a job pipeline, you know, we have so many people who have left the workforce to raise a family and giving them the opportunity to get some of these high-paying jobs partnering with Bellevue College, partnering with Coding Dojo and other programs and getting them to work with our large employers for internships and getting people back into the workforce and inviting new people into the workforce. Also, you know, becoming a welcoming city and making sure that everybody has the ability to communicate with the city, that they know how to talk to us and make their needs known. I'm the only council member who has published office hours regularly. And I'm full every week talking to various people from the community. And also making sure that our police department treats everybody the same, regardless of whether you live here, you're visiting here, you work here, you get the same treatment you deserve. And, and you know, we've done a, a big review of police force recently with 47 recommendations. So we're serious about that.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Lipscomb, this question now goes to you. How do you make sure Bellevue is truly a city for all, especially for the working class people who will be needed to support all this growth?
That's an excellent question. I, I have a strong value that the people should be able to live close to where they work. I worry a lot about the economic diversity of Bellevue. And I see the economic diversity very differently between what it is at noon, when the, it is full of workers, and what it is at midnight, when all those workers who are lower wage and cannot stay in our city are off living where they can afford to live. I think that there are several things that we can do to, to make this easier city for people to live in. And one of them is, as many of the others have mentioned, looking at our zoning and the density in our neighborhoods. I think that if we had, say, detached ADUs and we could have more rental opportunities in the single-family neighborhoods, I see that as an equity issue, where those who are not able to afford to buy in a neighborhood can still experience all the amenities of those neighborhoods by renting. And I know as a previous renter myself, for many different times during my life, rentals do not bring down the property values. They actually can be very vibrant members of the community. And I think that we need to make sure that we have opportunities for workers to also be able to buy into the area, to get starter homes, not, not only have the option of renting or having to buy a million plus dollar single-family home. So I think that we need to make sure that we, we have enough opportunities for people to put down their roots in an, in an ownership setting. We also need obviously a lot of publicly supported housing. I would like to see a lot of that right around in the transit oriented development corridors, especially out in Belred and the East Main area. I would like to see us maximize the affordable housing in those areas because of the, the increased benefit that come from having people not having to pay for, say, owning a car. They can live in those areas and also work in our city. I think we also.
Let me, let me stop you here and, and give Mr. Nguyen House a chance to answer as well. How do you make Bellevue a city for all?
Thank you Essex, I'm not quite sure how we're managing the one-minute answers here during this conversation.
We're not necessarily managing the one-minute answers precisely. I want to give people a chance to have their thoughts and I want to, you know, be fair in general. I won't cut you off too quickly.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it. So I think first and foremost, we have to look towards our mantra of our city, right? Diversity is our strength, we welcome the world, which I think the Bellevue, the city of Bellevue's done a terrific job on. You know, we recently just hired our first ever chief diversity, inclusion and equity officer in Linda Whitehead. We have an updated our diversity strategic plan. We also just recently approved Bellevue Centers Communities of Color Initiative, which is going to be a community-led effort to advance racial equity here and build trust and awareness across the city's diverse population. Then we have numerous other programs, which is our Diversity Advantage Team Summit Network, our Welk, and our Welcoming Week. And then, and then resources for immigrants and refugees to our city. So first and foremost, I think we need to make sure that folks understand that we are welcoming city and we want them here. Now, in terms of affordable housing, we've done a lot, but we need to continue to build on it. The city has produced nearly 1,300 affordable housing units since 2017 with over 700 units currently already in the development pipeline. We set a goal of 2,500 units in that plan. We will overshoot that goal by a tremendous amount. That doesn't mean our work is over, doesn't mean we don't need to create more, but we are taking the right actions moving forward. And we're continuing our work by doing such things as providing incentives for faith-owned and public surplus and nonprofit housing properties, developing affordable transit-oriented development on public land such as the San Transit Operations Main Facility in Belred. And then we've got recent updates to our multifamily tax exemption, which is going to create quite a few affordable housing units. And that, instead of a developer taking a fee in lieu, will actually be creating those affordable units. And then we're also providing housing incentives on the East Main area and then changing our city code parking minimums so we can create multifamily developments and workforce housing, as some others have mentioned here. So I'm really proud of the work that we've done, but certainly there's a lot more work ahead to make sure that everyone feels welcome in Bellevue. Everybody can be in Bellevue and that we have a place for them in Bellevue.
Okay, very good. Let's, let's discuss, you know, what we've all lived through in this, this last 18 months or so. And that is COVID. And Dr. Johnson, this next question goes to you first. You know, Bellevue had a lot of plans for growth and development, then came the pandemic. So what does the city need to do to account in the long term, for the long-term effects of COVID on our economy and in our community at large?
Yes, certainly. And I am certainly seeing the signs of it in my own neighborhood. I'm seeing closed businesses, I'm seeing worker shortages, even supply chain issues, which is very concerning for both small and large businesses. And so we certainly need to address that with, with changes in government policy essentially. This has largely been a mandated economic recession. And so in order to get out of it, we'll need to change the policy. We'll need to reopen fully, City Hall needs to be fully open and available for services to the public. And we also need to do things safely, but we need to realize that we've moved beyond an emergency to now a chronic condition, so to speak. And so we need to shift gears so that we don't have, you know, complete economic losses the way we're having now. You know, our unemployment has spiked and it's really interesting in that we have, you know, higher than normal unemployment, but we also have worker shortages. And, and that's just an unsustainable situation. And we are in a few years going to have larger employers growing their base, but we don't have that today. And so we have to work today to reopen fully. And I just really believe the city needs to support that opening. And sometimes even actually questioning the larger county and state plans, you know, because the city is a large enough city that it needs to move forward with its own, with its own values and its own.
Give you a few extra seconds for, for a quick answer, because certainly we are hearing from the folks who have restaurants. The outdoor tent exemptions has expired, but we still have this current COVID situation. So as a council member, and I want all the council members. So as a council member, and I want all the council members to direct to all the candidates to address this. What do you do? What would you do to help restaurants during the fall and winter to continue to let them have the tents and the expanded outdoor dining?
Absolutely. We need to have exemptions. I mean, we need to reduce regulations. We need to reduce taxes and fees. We need if those outdoor dining areas are working and they did through the winter over last year, then we need to continue that. And you know, we might do more events where we actually temporarily close off streets and have, you know, the the dining come out a little further into the street. You know, we have to, of course, understand traffic congestion and not make that worse. But we certainly need to support our small businesses and they've closed at an alarming rate, so we need to help them.
Okay, let me stop you there. And Mayor Robinson, your your thoughts on dealing with COVID now in the long term and throw in your answer about restaurants and those outdoor restaurants as well? Please go ahead.
Well, first of all, Essex, you know, Bellevue is emerging from COVID as one of the top economies in the country and the top real office real estate market in the country. So it has been a tremendous challenge, but I am so proud of how we have all gathered together, gathered our resources, helped each other and come out of this pretty much on top in comparison to other cities. But we need to continue with strong small business support. I described that before. I mean, the regulations for outdoor dining coming from the state level. And I lobbied the state to relax them so that we could do what we did over the summer, going out into the street, going into our parking lots, putting up the tents. And and you know, the challenge of the fire code with heaters and overhead coverings, you know, that needs to be addressed. So that's something, you know, we can really ask our economic development department to really focus on. And we need to continue partnering with our large employers. I mean, they have been incredibly generous to our community. They have given millions of dollars towards rental assistance and small business grants. And, you know, there are the ones who are looking at this employment pipeline with the internship. So that's really important. And also maintaining the community conversations, because we need to keep hearing from the community what the needs are as they emerge. We will address them. We want to address them. We want our communities to remain intact as we get through this.
Okay, very good. We continue this question with Mr. Newmanhouse. Again, COVID long term, how does Bellevue have to change to cope with the long term effects? And your thought on that specific question of making sure that restaurants can continue the outdoor dining as we still continue to wrestle with COVID right now?
Yeah, I think, again, I mentioned some of these during the top of the conversation, but the the city really did pivot extremely well to reach out to the restaurants and do as much as we possibly can to release or ease the ability to do outdoor dining, expediting permits in order to do that. But certainly, as many restaurants have have shown, there's a real interest to have expanded outdoor dining beyond just the summer months. In fact, that's something that our economic development team is looking at right now to expand that and be able to maintain that, because certainly the COVID nineteen or the variant is not going away anytime soon. So we need to do this to keep all of our restaurants in 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 good shape in Bellevue and give them as many tools as they possibly need in order to survive during during this pandemic. You know, and overall, I think in terms of going forward, we need to continue to work with our great nonprofits and partners, you know, be it the BDA, be it the Bellevue Chamber. They have been instrumental in overcoming COVID nineteen for our our business businesses here, both big and small, but especially on the small businesses front, helping them with technical assistance, helping them fill out, you know, page after page for for loans. And 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 really helping them pivot as well to more of an online digital presence versus just the physical one. So with those partners, we've been able to to do that, and I think we need to continue to do that. And I really think we need to keep our outreach going as well to consciously understand what both of our businesses and residents, what they're experiencing and what we can do to help.
Okay, very, very good. And Ms. Lipscomb, your thoughts on this question, dealing with COVID long term? And also for right now, getting restaurants perhaps the exemptions they need to continue of with the outdoor dining?
I think we need to realize and we need to keep reminding ourselves that COVID is both a health emergency and an economic problem. And I personally, in my own family, my husband came down with COVID the week after the first patient was diagnosed in Kirkland. And he is still suffering some long term effects from that. And we have lost hundreds of thousands of our fellow residents of the United States to this disease. And so I think that more than anything, we need to make sure that we are following the science about what is safe. If that means that in order to open fully, we need to start having vaccine mandates and having ways to track so that people who are unvaccinated cannot partake of the, you know, the amenities of our city because they are a health risk to everyone else. I think that that would be a valid response. I think that COVID or COVID variants will be with us for a long time. And we will have to begin to start dealing with the fact that we are now living in such an interconnected world that pandemics are going to be much more common. And I do believe that our restaurants should be able to open up to outdoor dining spaces at any time of the year. I do believe in closing off some streets so that they can, so that we can have more, you know, outside activities. And I and I I feel like whatever help the city can give to those small businesses, we probably don't have the funding to fully, you know, cover all those things. But I think that we can definitely, as a city, lobby for state and federal funding to help the small businesses.
And let me be clear about something you touched on, because it's an issue that concerns so many people. Are you saying that the city of Bellevue itself should consider imposing a vaccine mandate within the city limits about?
I think that that's difficult to do, that just because oftentimes people don't know where does Bellevue end and Kirkland start? And where does Redmond, you know, where are the boundaries? If if we had another surge like we are, you know, have seen, it seems like we are starting to max out our hospital capacity rate in the state, I believe that maybe Bellevue would have to go alone, but I don't think we'd be. I hope that King County would also look into that and we should be lobbying King County to keep an eye on that option if we need it. I am worried about the health implications of our hospitals being filled with COVID patients, especially ones who are unvaccinated.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Borby, your thoughts on this question, COVID long term and dealing well with the situation that restaurants are facing now? And what do you think about keeping those outdoor spaces open? Oh, don't forget to unmute.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. And as a small business owner in the healthcare field, I think going into COVID was one of the scariest things that we had to deal with. And part of the challenge was just trying to figure out what was going on and what we needed to do, getting the right information, understanding what the what was allowed and not allowed. So I think one of the things we can do to prepare ourselves long term is to basically be able to create a small commission right now and basically take a look at the lessons learned and how we can improve our emergency preparedness for the future. How can we harden some of our procedures and policies for that? And I think there's a lot to be learned from businesses, from neighborhoods, from city staff, from nonprofits that all had to deal with this in their own way, right? I think that, you know, the way I I I understand that the city has responded very well during COVID and had made, you know, made use a good use of funds to keep people housed, to keep businesses running. And we need to encapsulate that and we need to institutionalize those lessons learned so that, you know, we don't know what the next emergency is going to look like. But we want to use these painful experiences to harden and improve our 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 ability, our capacities in the future, right? And as a former quality management professional, right, that is something I think about. In terms of the, in in terms of in terms of businesses, in terms of the restaurants, right? I do. I do agree. I think we should be supporting them. One of the things that I saw during the COVID period where some businesses were able to transition and pivot very well. I'll give a little example. Tuttabella Restaurant out in Crossroads was able to convert their restaurant into a kitchen and started supplying ready-made meals to QFC. And they made business doing that. And I think there's a lot of innovation that occurred.
Understanding, but let me let me get you to 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 wrap up here and then move on to Mr. Lee. Dealing with COVID long term and what do you think about making sure that restaurants, even in the short term, can still use those outdoor spaces?
Yeah, in terms of the restaurants in the short term, I agree with basically helping with the permit thing. Oh, did you? Oh, you cut me off. Okay, sorry.
But we, yes, I was. Mr. Lee, please, if you would address the questions as well.
Absolutely. We need to help the people that need the help most. And small businesses, especially minority small businesses, pop and mom stores, they don't have normal resources and understanding how to access help they need. And that's all the federal money, it's state money and Bellevue has done its share. And I think we've done it through our nonprofits and we are, you know, the COVID nineteen, the pandemic has uncovered some real significant needs that we haven't paid attention to. So it's a good thing that we now realize what they are. We are connecting with the folks. And I think it's a lot of volunteers from the communities themselves who have come up with PPEs and so on. And we are doing with the city, working together with our public safety, economic development. So I think these are good things. And we're also building capacities for the minority groups, small businesses, how they can learn to connect with the help that they can seek, such as government and other nonprofits and so on. And I think it's important we make them aware of the resources and what they can do to help others and as well as themselves. And also it allows small businesses to be creative, absolutely. When they cannot serve public in their restaurants, they are not developing catering services, taking taking things to other people. So I think that's all creativity and we need to encourage them. We need to have our business economic development group to help and teach and we have provide technical support. On the longer term basis, we're reaching, we're working with regional organizations, we are, such as PRC, Regional Government, EDD, Economic Development District and Greater Seattle Partnership. We're figuring out in the long term, how do we build up our economic recovery through workforce training, perhaps workforce development? Because many things are changed. We're gonna have a looking at the new economy, things will be done differently. So these are the things we need to be looking at, short term, long term. Capacity that people can actually.
Very good. Let me let me let me cut you off here, move on to our next question. And Ms. Lipscomb, this goes to you first. Let's switch a little bit from the economy to those issues of public safety that have been touched on in some of your answers. Bellevue is going to be hiring a new police chief. What experiences and qualities and policies do you think the city should be looking for?
That's an excellent question. I have met with interim chief Shirley and I think he is an amazing chief. And he is has, he and I have a lot that we agree on about making the department, taking it from good to great. I I fully support our police department and our other parts of our public safety system. I think though that we need to make sure that there is a lot of community input in the hiring of a new police chief. And right now that decision is is solely up to the city manager. The city council doesn't really even have a role in that. So I'd like to see that expanded to where the community has some input. I believe that we need to look for a police chief who is able to take the department into the our current time, into our changed reality that we are living in now. And that means a department that is much more transparent and open with its data, that is much more willing to to be looking at alternatives. For instance, I believe that we need to have mental health first responders who can answer some of the nine one one calls. We know there's concern about crime in our city, but there is also a large number of calls that come into our nine one one centers that are not criminal in nature. And if we had, you know, social workers and mental health professionals who could take some of that load off of the police, then the police could be focusing on more of the crime issues.
Mr. Newmanhouse had brought this up earlier, the concept of defunding the police. Where do you stand on that?
Well, defund the police is a slogan that was intended to inflame and it is not a policy proposal. It is a slogan. I do not believe, I believe that as Bellevue grows, our public safety budget needs to grow. And that is what I've always said. And I believe that talking about defunding is only meant to divide and polarize. It is not meant as a true analysis of what our public safety system should look like and what will keep our neighborhoods and our people safe.
Okay, let me cut you off there because we'll get to Mr. Newmanhouse. For your response, what are you looking for when it comes to the next police chief, police policies? And you brought up defunding police. Is that something that folks in Bellevue need to worry about?
I'm not sure I I brought the police during this conversation today, but but first I wanted to just let my opponent know that in terms of the the mental health aspect, there already is a program called CCAT that's just coming out of the pilot process. Community Assistance Program, which actually has mental health professionals that go out with police officers. They're actually taken from our CARES program and they go out during a mental health crisis situations or drug overdose, et cetera. So that program is already up and running and I'm very proud of it, supportive of it.
That pilot hasn't ended.
In terms of.
Please let him continue. Please let him continue.
Thank you. In terms of what we're looking for in the next police chief, you know, obviously all council members have met with Chief Shirley, although he's not appointed yet, that that process is still going forward. But, you know, for 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 me, I want someone who is going to maintain the very high standards of the Bellevue Police Department. It's one of a very few police departments that's nationally accredited by CLIA. It takes the training and resources of its officers in diversity, inclusion and implicit bias and policing very seriously. The department's built, you know, the the whole foundation department is built on community policing and consistently consults with different advisory groups. So they're doing a lot of the right things already. Can we get, you know, good to great? Of course. I think every department in the city wants to get better. That's one of the values of the city of Bellevue. Now, in terms of, you know, defunding the police, you know, it's 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 I I don't know who started the slogan. But, you know, I'm I'm extremely one hundred percent supportive of our exceptional men and women, the Bellevue Police Department. They do an incredible job. And, you know, my opponent did come before the Bellevue City Council and I I believe her her views on this have have evolved. But she did say that she wanted to reallocate money out of the department to other parts of the budget. And anyone can look it up.
Let me, let me give her a short chance to respond here before we move on. Please go ahead.
Yes, I I was I was speaking in particular about the fact that Bellevue sent a an armored vehicle and equipment and personnel into Seattle during the protests last summer. And I thought that that was not a good use of our of our city resources. And so I objected to that. And yes, my opponent has made that into an ad that he, you know, takes one sentence out of. I would I would urge everyone to look at the entire three minutes of my testimony. I testified several times last year to the city council. And but I I did not, I did not, I do not in general say that just a blanket defund the police. I think that we should spend our money wisely and our tax dollars in that case were not spent wisely.
Okay, we move on to other candidates. Mr. Lee, this question for you. What are you looking for in the next police chief? What sort of policies do you want to see pursued for public safety?
I look for police chief as a person that's respected by his peers. And as experience has demonstrated, what police department has always been in Bellevue. And Bellevue Police is probably the best that I know of from my thirty years of in the on the council. I have traveled all over the United States and knowing what, you know, other people, other departments have done. So I have high respect. And, you know, we don't make decisions on choosing the police. And we are, even if we are, this is not the appropriate place for us to talk about who to choose and what to choose. But we have expectations and we will have hopefully influence to the city manager. And we can express our, you know, expectations and desires. But we wanted the, you know, people that can communicate. And I think that that police chief has demonstrated the capability of doing that and a very well accepting the minority and community as a whole and have them have input. I think this is excellent. And so that's a result that Bellevue, you know, has had great, great result and command. We have not had one single live loss during or after the May thirty first riot incident. And we have not lost a single building and we actually are going through. And we actually are going through, that's not to say that we are perfect. No, there's always something we can do better, always improvement. Like Deputy Mayor said, you know, we're always looking for improvement. And I think we have made this commitment to look into the department. Many recommendations we made, but the bottom line is they have done very well. And we're just maybe formalizing some of the things that we're doing and that we can do better, and we'll continue to do so.
Let me, let me stop you there. Thank you. And Mr. Borby, again, your thoughts on public safety, police, a new chief?
Oh, thank you. So as a father, as a resident, and as a local business owner, public safety is very important to me. And I believe that everyone in Bellevue should feel safe, right? It's important for our growth. It's important for our neighborhoods. I want to make sure that our public safety officers have the resources that they need in order to carry out their jobs and enforce our laws. And when I say public safety officers, I also want to make sure we include the police, the firefighters, and the EMTs, who all provide public safety to the people, the workers and residents of Bellevue. I believe that public safety is at its best when there's a strong bond of trust between the community and the public safety officers. And that's one thing I really appreciated about former Chief Steve Mylett and Chief Shirley, right? Steve, former Chief Mylett really wanted to create this strong bond. He implemented the Sector Captain Program, so each sector captain could get to know the neighborhoods that they serve. And he hired Chief Shirley out of Santa Monica because of his previous work in this area in terms of building strong relationships with the community. And that's paid off for the police and public safety as well, right? To reference the incidents from last year, they were residents and people of Bellevue gave over 10,000 videos and pictures that allowed the police to round up the perpetrators of the booting while keeping the peaceful protesters safe. I am in favor of accountability measures, just like anybody in public service needs to be accountable to the public. So I applaud the transparency that we have, all the data on the website. And I believe, as indicated in the audit report from the Office of Independent Review, that there are things we can do better, right? As a former company executive, I've received audits in the past. And I know it may take a while to operationalize some of the audit items, but we always welcome them as a way to get ourselves from, as Chief Shirley said, from good to great, right?
Very good. Let me, let me, let me stop you there. And also get thoughts on this very same question first from Mayor Robinson.
You know, I'm looking for a police chief who can partner with the council and partner with the community. I was so pleased with Chief Mylett when we asked for the independent review of force policies, and he sat down and said he agreed. And the whole, you know, he was a partner with us on that. And now our interim police chief is a partner in implementing the recommendations. We're already halfway through, and we anticipate to have implemented them all by the end of the year. That's the kind of partnership we need. And with the communities, you know, we have, in the past, had the community groups that the chief of police meets with on a regular basis. I think those are really effective. I think our centering communities of color program is going to be partnering with the police to make sure that everybody has a voice and that everybody is respected. I, you know, we have a Bellevue CARES program with our fire department where we, if somebody falls and the fire department goes out there, they send the social worker out to meet with them and find out what kind of support services they need so that they're not calling 911 because they're falling and that they're not falling and they're safe in their home. Translating that over to police is a very different and challenging issue. As a home care physical therapist, I have inadvertently found myself in domestic violence situations where people are armed. That's not my place, and I'm not comfortable sending a social worker out to, into situations where they are not going to have protection. So right now, the CCAT program that the deputy mayor mentioned is looking at how do we triage situations and get the right person out there in a way that's safe for everybody. And I feel like there's a lot of improvement we can do there, and I'm really looking forward to figuring out how we do that. Also, you know, partnering with organizations in the community. I asked our interim police chief Shirley if he'll meet with the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, and he, you know, he plans to do that.
Madam Mayor, let me, let me interrupt you only because we, we need to move on to our just final answer on this subject, and then we'll move on to one more subject. But Dr. Johnson, your thoughts on this issue of police?
Yes, thank you. Well, I've had the pleasure to meet with interim police chief Shirley. And I've also met with police officers on the beat and enjoyed a ride along with Officer Craig Hanami. And I think my largest takeaway from that was the importance of neighborhood engagement in creating community policing that works for the public, that it serves and protects. I have the utmost respect for law enforcement. Their work is difficult, and it often has a component of mentoring and counseling all folded in. I do believe we need more mental health services urgently, but I don't believe they ever replace police or fire services. They would be an adjunct to those services and often would not stand alone in an emergency response scenario. So I believe, and from my perspective, that hiring a police chief from, from within would be ideal for Bellevue. Bellevue has an amazing, an amazing force, amazing police force. They're well trained. They actually are above national standards. And they've actually really raised and set the bar for other police departments nationally. So I believe we could find an excellent police chief from within if Police Chief Shirley does not step up into that role. And so I believe that could really shorten our search time, perhaps, with city management. But that being said, I would have to share my personal experience. We have had a riot and protests that weren't always well managed, and the police weren't always well supported. So I would want to make sure that we fully fund and support law enforcement so that they can do their job properly so that the neighborhood, like myself and my neighbors, aren't left cleaning up the mess. So let's all, let's all work together. Thank you.
Good place to stop there. All right. Let me alert our candidates and everybody along the line that, I'm going to ask one more question. It will be about homelessness. And I am going to pretty strictly enforce the one-minute response rule so we don't go too far over, too far past our one o'clock time, because we're already about six or seven minutes past now. So this question first goes to, to Mr. Borby. And you only get a minute, but give us your top strategies, just the highlights of your strategies for dealing with the homelessness situation in Bellevue.
So I think that the homelessness situation needs to be addressed head-on. It's a regional problem. It affects all of us, and Bellevue can have a leading role in addressing homelessness. I think the homeless are best served when they are in shelter or housing and receiving wraparound services. I think homelessness is a more new, it's a very nuanced problem with many categories and reasons for why people are homeless. We need to work both on getting the homeless into shelters and receiving services, but at the same time, also digging deep and looking at why they're becoming homeless and trying to work on solutions for domestic violence, for abandoned youth, for temporary financial housing assistance and foreclosure prevention, among others.
Okay, very good. Mr. Lee, your thoughts on dealing with homelessness?
This has been one of the most controversial issues. As I mentioned to you, we've been working on this for the last 30 years. Homelessness is part of the housing problem, housing challenges we have. And obviously, homelessness is a special, special case, requires a lot of considerations. Like was mentioned by my opponent, mental situations, economic situations, very important. That has to do with education. That's a long-term, long-term situation we have to look at. And it's a regional problem, not just a local problem. So we have to take care of the situation issue. And I think Bellevue has been working on it and is doing the right thing, but doing it thoughtfully, carefully, by making sure the community is involved because it's a situation that the public has to be supportive because it affects all of us, no matter where we are. And it takes the resources, it takes commitment, it takes tolerance, it takes working together. So I think this is the problem that we're working on, where I continue to do so, and it requires collaboration. And I think Bellevue has offered a very good model, and I believe...
Very good. Dr. Robinson?
Oh, well, I think, you know, affordability, homelessness is a multi-pronged problem. We have, we have to prevent homelessness from happening in the first place, and then we need to help the people who are currently experiencing homelessness. And to prevent it, you know, we need more affordable housing. We need it on all, the entire spectrum so that if people are paying $1,000 a month and they had a cut in salary, they can find a place at $500 a month. Most of our homeless are working. Most of our homeless can afford $300 a month. We have nothing in Bellevue at that affordability. So that's where the micro housing units can come in, but we need to focus on that. And I'm really interested in helping the 200-plus Bellevue School District kids and their families who are currently experiencing homelessness. I think if they can focus on learning and not their housing stability, they can graduate, they can go to college and get jobs and break the cycle. And then to treat it, you know, our council took a very bold move and voted to take the $1,590 tax money on our own to create our own supportive housing, to create homeless shelters, to create low-income housing that will serve our community and the region. And we are currently, you know, we just started collecting that at the end of March. It's only been about six months, and we've already put it into human services. And we have an RFP out right now for some affordable housing.
I have to, I have to stop you there. And Dr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. The homelessness situation, I think, has really grown, and we do need to take a compassionate and pragmatic approach. I believe that we have to look at the root causes of homelessness. There's mental health issues, there's substance abuse issues, there's economic recession, and also issues of trauma in people's lives that have placed them in a situation of homelessness. We can look to cities next door to know what not to do, but we can certainly have our own innovative ways, which I believe should be treatment-first models and also employment-based models for supportive housing so that we give people a hand up and help people to recover and to heal and to have hope. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Mr. Newenhouse?
Yes, thank you, Essex. So as mentioned earlier, it's a, it's a big problem and more than just a one-minute answer. But we've got about, according to the last count, about 446 unsheltered people in East King County. And we want to prevent homelessness, if possible, when it does occur, and then transition individuals back into stable housing as soon as possible. As most folks who dive into this issue know, the quicker you're able to do that, the quicker we're able to have success stories for homeless. So we've adopted, begun implementing our, obviously, we talked about earlier about our affordable housing strategy. We're funding those very important nonprofit organizations serving people experiencing homelessness. We need to do that, and we need to increase that funding. And then we need to continue to subsidize housing, and then we need to have homelessness outreach, which we've started with our homeless outreach coordinator, who's doing just a fantastic job with connecting those experiencing homelessness to services throughout, throughout the region.
I have to stop you there. I have to stop.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Ms. Liskam, please go ahead.
Yes, homelessness is a regional issue. We have 12,000 homeless people in King County, and I believe that we probably have many more in Bellevue than have currently been counted. I believe that one of the first things we should do is to expand the homeless coordinator program and add more than just one. Because if we have several hundred homeless people on the east side, one person is not going to be able to cover that. And I believe that she's probably stretched very thin and overworked right now. I also believe that we need to get these people into housing. I think that our men's shelter was a good start, but we really do need a couples' shelter because some of the people who are possibly refusing going into shelter are couples who do not want to be separated, and we do not have a couples' shelter on the east side right now. So I think that there's a number of things that we need to start looking at, and then we need to look at affordable housing in general and get our affordability better for everyone along the income spectrum.
All right. Thank you all, thank you all candidates for your short answers on a really complex subject. I do want to give candidates a chance just to make a closing statement, especially since we didn't have opening statements. I know we're running long. But even a 30-second closing statement, I think, would be helpful. And Mayor Robinson, you first here for a closing statement. Just take 30 seconds.
I've been in service of the residents since I moved here in 1997 as garden club president, as chair of the Network on Aging Parks Board, as council member, and now mayor. And I love the city. I want to ensure that everyone who lives and works here experiences a safe and welcoming environment. I'm looking forward to working with the community to address the challenges of a growing city and to celebrate the opportunities that that growth will bring. I want to continue providing the kind of effective, unifying leadership that moves our communities forward, makes Bellevue a world-class city for all. Really proud to be endorsed by all of Bellevue's state legislators and strong regional leaders.
Thank you, thank you very much. And Dr. Johnson, 30 seconds.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Gina Johnson for Bellevue City Council, position six, as a fresh, yet experienced voice for public safety and economic opportunity. It's time to get back to Bellevue as being the best place to live, work, and play. I will work for you to keep our city strong, open for business, and moving forward. I'm supported by residents, businesses, transportation experts, police, fire, healthcare, civic and regional leaders. I ask for your vote to build a brighter Bellevue together. Join me at drjinaforbellevue.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Liskam, 30 seconds.
Thank you. I believe we're at a turning point where our city needs more active leadership to move forward on a number of different issues. We didn't talk about climate change today, but that's one that I feel is very strongly about. Housing will be my highest priority because I want to make sure that the next generation has the same opportunities that I and many of you all have had to make Bellevue our home. I'm the proud granddaughter of a police officer, so I also will look forward to working with our public safety staff to make sure that everyone in our neighborhood is safe. There's a reason that so many of the east side's elected leaders at the state, county, and city level have endorsed me. They know my work ethic. Okay, thank you.
I have to stop you there. All right. Mr. Newenhouse?
Thank you. Well, it's so vital that we retain those characteristics that made Bellevue special while also remaining open to opportunities and innovations to manage our growth and do so in a sustainable way. My endorsements represent the diversity of our city, from labor unions to business alliances, from Bellevue fighter fighters, and the first ever candidate to ever be endorsed by the Bellevue Police Officers Guild. And they also include Democrats, independents, Republicans, nonpartisan elected officials, and mayors from Bellevue, Renton, Burien, and so many more. There's so much future potential for our great city, but we need proven leadership and unbiased dedicated public servants in office to realize those aspirations in an inclusive, nonpartisan manner so that everybody in Bellevue can thrive. Thank you.
I need to stop you there. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Conrad Lee, 30 seconds for a closing statement.
Well, Bellevue has been a very successful city. In the last 30 years while I'm on the city council, we've come a long way. We have prospered, and we are going to continue to be so. You know, I'm not... as my other colleagues have. And but I'm a workhorse, and I make things happen. And what's happened in the last 30 years, as we've seen and as I heard from everybody, we are a success story. But with success, we come with challenges. And we'll continue to make sure that the challenges will be overcome, will be handled, will be...
Mr. Lee, I have to...
We are cooks, we are chefs.
I have to stop you there.
If the ingredient works, that would be a great city. That's what...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Borby, please wrap us up. 30 seconds.
All right. Well, I envision a Bellevue that is livable, affordable, safe, vibrant, and diverse, an economic and cultural center where different people of all backgrounds can live in prosperity and harmony. But to do this, we need to address, recognize and address the issues in the city's path in housing, transportation, climate, environment, services, and public safety. After graduating from MIT, I worked in corporate, bringing management skills and strategic thinking to the council. I've been endorsed by the Seattle Times, who previously endorsed my opponent, signaling as they said that in these times of change, we need fresh and energetic leadership. I've also been endorsed by a majority of our state legislators and four of the seven sitting council members, including Mayor Lynn Robinson.
Mr. Borby, I need to wrap us up. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you. Thanks to our, our audience who helped with our technical problems and let us go a little late. And to, to Patrick Bannon, let me turn things back over to you.
Thank you, Essex. Essex, you did a wonderful job moderating. Thanks for navigating today's conversation. Be sure and catch Essex on Cairo 7 News. I also want to thank our sponsors for the Downtown Talk series. They are Amazon, Heritage Bank, Kaiser Permanente, Puget Sound Energy, and Vulcan Real Estate. And thank you especially to the audience for sticking with us and for being a part of this important dialogue. We are lucky to be doing this work here in this city. And on behalf of the Bellevue Downtown Association, thank you for watching and for being a part of this dynamic downtown community. and for being a part of this dynamic downtown community. We'll see you all soon.